All in favor? Do you stand and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where our nation under God, in the good soul of the Constitution of Justice. I need a motion to accept this evening's agenda. Stacy, all in favor? Okay. Moving on to the minutes from the last meeting. The motion.
Salute.
Jason, Dan. Any questions regarding the minutes of the previous meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to section four, these are personnel items for action. Need a motion?
Assume.
Linda? Danny? Any questions regarding the personnel items? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is carried. We also have the resolution for the thirty twenty eight hearing. Degeneration, I need a motion. Dan? Stacy? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Okay. Moving on to section five, the financial items for action. We asked about budget transfers. Are they being separated, right? Five one, five two? Okay. I need a motion for the budget change.
Salute.
Linda? Dan? Any questions regarding that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Second, we have the Treasury's report, and there's also an internal editor report in there. If I read it correctly, an internal claims editor, I need a motion. Dan? Kathy? Any questions regarding the Treasury's report or the internal claims editor report? All in favor then? Aye. Opposed? That's carried as well. The miscellaneous items are CPSC, CFC section, any motion? Linda?
Second.
Jason? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the superintendents titles.
Yeah, I have a few. I just wanted to recognize some of our athletic teams. We had some great fall seasons that took place this year. Our soccer, boys soccer with sectional champions, girls were in the finals as well. Volleyball was all the way to the sectional championship and lost a tough one, nail biter in the fifth. And our cross country, our girls brought home the section four cross country championship. The boys were really close. They had a situation that occurred with one of their runners. Otherwise, they would have won as well. So, a lot of really good things happening this fall. And Mr. Hallenbeck will, I'm sure, probably update more. Just wanted to quickly mention the Career Center and give Mr. Westcott and his team over there that he's working together with to continue to develop the Career Center. It's been extremely popular and we're pleased at the progress that they've been making over there. After school enrichment care still continues to go on. We have about roughly anywhere from one hundred and fifty plus students who stay after in each of the buildings. So, it's nice to have the kids for some extended time. There are opportunities for us to be able to pull some small groups with kids who might need some intervention as well. So, we have that time to do those things. Last week, we held a guiding coalition meeting, which had staff from each of the buildings and administration. And we really took a look at our professional learning community data, what it is that we're collecting, and really having open, frank conversations about what data specifically do we want to use? What do we find is just not helpful? What is duplicate? So, there are a lot of conversations. It was great to get the entire group together, you know, to take a look at, we've been doing this work now. This is year seven. To be able to look at things a little bit closer and get their feedback was very helpful.
Okay. All right. For the president's report, I'm going to turn it over to our vice president, Lindgren, to talk to us about Syracuse.
Yeah, I had the opportunity last weekend to go up to Syracuse and spend three wonderful days with board members from across the state. And this is the first time we've been back since before COVID. It was a statewide convention, and we've all attended those. And it was just inspirational, motivating for me to get back to in-person networking, in-person training again. So, it was amazing. And please, the next one is going to be in Buffalo in October next year. So, set your calendars for that. I wanted to give you some highlights. I gave you some trinkets that I brought back from the convention. But basically, one of the things that I thought was really is they gave us an app that you could really use it for. You can set yourself up for your classes. And of course, my first day I spent doing law classes. Now, you may think that's crazy, but no, the updates are wonderful. And they were on legal issues associated with textbook and curriculum. This is one of those things that are current and forefront, what we're dealing with today, adoption of curriculum, et cetera. First amendment rights for both staff and students. There were special education updates, and there were things associated with public and non-public school discussions. There's also some updates on state education. So, that morning and afternoon was very busy, but it was really great getting together with about two hundred people. I was amazed at how many people attended that first day conference. The other classes that I took were revolved around mental health. And one of the things that I went to was one that had to do with working with educators on well-being, best practices for resilience in school. And I provided you with a summary of the different classes that I went to. So, one of the other courses that I did revolved around that. What was neat about that was we are using data, we are using software to help collect that. And what was amazing to me was this particular organization actually has a software where it was able to collect data from fifty thousand students related to mental health issues that they're dealing with, along with adults that work with students, and gather that data, just like the surveys that we're working in here in our own district, to collect information to help us do what we need to do to help our kids and help our parents. So, it was really interesting. The welcome was basically a celebration of you. That's what it was titled, but it was a celebration of board members. And so, we had guest speakers from the superintendents association across the state, and they were motivational speakers. They were really great. I mean, they had some wonderful things to say. It was basically saying thank you for all the work that you are doing for our kids. And we just sat in the audience like, wow, I appreciate that. I mean, we don't hear enough. And just happened to be among those school board definitions. So, superintendents were getting up and saying, thank you for all you're doing for our families. And the other thing that we had, which I thought was very unique, is we had an individual who, his name is Frank Wong. He was from Lakota Roast Butt Reservation out in west. And he used song and creative expression with music. And basically, what he revolved, his message was grounding us in our collective history as Americans and connecting us to our past, present, and future, his name American. And he was, we threw our whole welcomes, two hours, where he came in and he did music, and he did poems, and it was just, it was so, I mean, I was right in front row, and I was just sitting back like, wow. I mean, beautiful. It was absolutely beautiful. And I did record some. I'd love to share it with you all in one of the other trees. I'd like to share some of that. The following morning was Marley Mantler. And I know the audience probably knows who she is, but she's amazing. I've seen her in several films. She was our keynote speaker. And basically, what she talked to us about is board members. And of course, it wasn't just board members. We were sitting in the audience, there was also educators who were guests there. And so, we had some teachers, and we had some superintendents and other administrators from across the state. So, we had probably over five hundred people there. But basically, she talked to us about how she took barriers and turned these barriers into vessels for success. She, using guidance she got from mentors like her parents and the teachers. Basically, she persevered, and she talks about her story of how she got where she was at two, three, four years old to where she is today. And she is truly a champion for children. Her most recent movie is Coda. If you haven't seen it, it's just, it's just an amazing, amazing film. Of course, it'll be a little snippet of that. I taped her whole program, so it was a very motivational, forty-five minutes. And I'd love to share that with you as well. It was just so inspirational. And my, my next day was, was on health and safety, and it was the evolved brief. We actually had investigators that were on site in Texas. And they talked to us about the shortcomings of what happened. And they also talked about, and this was a hard one for you to sit through, because they also reviewed Columbine, what happened in Florida, and Sandy Hook. And it was a lot of data for, the place was packed, standing in the movies like right now. But basically, all of us wanted to hear what transpired. Why were so many people, so many kids killed in Texas? A lot of mistakes were made. But what my takeaway was, and I think we all felt the same way, if we see something, say something. Again, a lot of note-taking, you know, I take a lot of notes. But I also have some more information about what they have from their investigation. But these individuals, one of the investigators that was on site was actually in St. Louis because they had had another shooting. So, we had one guy that was there from Texas, but the other guy was totally waiting for the death shooting that happened that weekend. Couple other ones that were, that I picked. I mean, there were many courses, as you know. And it's such a banquet of things to look at that you could go to. But the things that I felt were important for me as a board member, I wanted to have some more information revolving around collaboration, teamwork, mental health, school board meetings. But the other one I did that was, was hard to sit through, but I learned a lot, was there was a panel of psychiatrists, a student who was now in recovery, who had suffered through depression, and then a producer. And what they did is they created a movie. It's called Tough Hope. It's about a forty-five minute film that we got to see. It was an actual screening of four students that were dealing with depression and what they went through to go through recovery. Now, all four students are doing wonderfully now, you know, in their middle twenties. But the bottom line was, one of those students was a guest, courageous. And what she shared to us as an audience was amazing. It was an honest discussion amongst the psychiatrist and the producer, but it's a wonderful film. And it's just, what can we do to help prevent these crises? What can we do? What kinds of things can we do for support? And then finally, the last couple of things had to do with board meetings. What can we do to foster transparency and trust? What are the criteria? And I, like I said, I can get you right into the link, and you can look at all the slides and some of the information. I'll be happy to share that with you because the app is wide open. It was a, it was a, you need to do this.
Yes, it is. Great. Thank you very much. You should have some of that. Thank you, Mrs. Gretz. All right. Moving on to district business. We have, what, five items here, all against separate matters. Okay. We have a new agenda format.
Which is hard to really go back to.
Okay, right. We have a contract for transportation requests for Lakeview Chapel. I need a motion. Danny? Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
We outside of a contract with AVRE. Need a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Jason? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Yes, they have a contract with the vessel. School district? Need a motion? Danny? Linda? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. UHS contract rider, I need a, I need a motion. Kathy? Linda? All in favor? Aye. And finally, the resolution to join in the litigation against the vaping. Danny?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Those are all carried. All right. Thank you. And with that, we now move into our public comment section. I have a list here of those that have signed in to speak. Mr. Ollie?
Thank you. Mrs. Gretz mentioned, if you see something, say something. And that was echoed in the district communication yesterday. And in the last paragraph, it said, "As we are teaching students responsibility and leadership, it is essential that they be able to share their concerns with teachers and adults." Last spring, you had eight students go to teachers and adults about serious concerns, and things got worse for them instead of better. Their school experience taught them, they would have been better off if they never said anything at all. I've been a part of the Owigo Appalachian community for twenty-five years and know many of you, some of you for twenty-five years. The mess we find ourselves in today was caused by arrogance, the failure to follow basic procedures and policy, as well as unprofessional conduct, including contacting employers, immature Facebook posts, and the copying, pasting, and sending of at least one of my privileged and confidential emails to you through Facebook Messenger. It's embarrassing. It's been more than six months since the district became aware of the original complaints filed by two school employees on behalf of students. It's been three months since I emailed you and notified you of those two significant issues. And it has been at least ten days since Axshar Consulting LLC submitted its independent investigation report to your school attorney. Throughout, the district's response has been unsatisfactory at best. Our request to meet with you in executive session, we're in an effort not to embarrass the school district and not to embarrass the board. However, you've left us no choice. On the advice of counsel, please know the Office of Civil Rights accepted our complaint on October twenty-sixth. It was within the one hundred and eighty-day limit. This complaint was filed and signed by eleven parents. We're in the process of retaining an attorney. Please reflect on that as you read through your report, our complaint, and review your mission statement. Thank you.
Mr. Palladino?
I'd like to first say, I think we can make it clear that this is not a playing time issue. I think that was an original complaint, that this was parents complaining that their kids weren't getting enough playing time. And I think that significantly derailed the proper investigation. A second thing I'd like to point out is that at the last board meeting, I was told in a very condescending way that, Joe, you have been involved with education. You're part of education for a long time. You know that the only people who can participate in an executive session are board members and administration. And I knew at the time that was not right. It's just wrong. Anyone can be invited. Anyone who is approved by the board can attend an executive session. And in that executive session, that's where we could have handled this prior to going to the Office of Civil Rights. So, you know, if other members of the board are not aware of these things, that are being told these things that are untrue or inaccurate, I would do your homework. Because we easily could have been invited to a board meeting, to an executive session, and kind of handled this without making it such a big deal. Because it is a big deal. And the last thing I'd like to point out is that the issue at hand is, I've always been sensitive about athletics, right? So, the issue at hand is of parents bringing students from out of district to the Owigo School District to participate in sports, with the claims of them being bullied. Those are the actions, parents bringing students here and causing certain issues like this one that we have at hand. Brought by a parent to bring their kids here in the past and present, once under the claims that they were being bullied, and now it turns into this kind of fiasco. Just complete disappointment on how this has been handled. Could have been handled three months ago, and it wasn't. So, here we are.
Laura Kiecheck. I hope I said that right.
It's Kiecheck.
Kiecheck, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Laura Kiecheck, and I reside at three thirteen Stock's Road in Owigo. I am here as the vice president of Appalachian Elementary School Parent Group, representing our organization and our school community. Our focus tonight is to propose the replacement and upgrade of AES playground equipment. Not only do we want to inform the board of our current state of our playground, but more importantly, we would like to build a partnership with the board and gain your support and resources to make it a reality in the near future. We recognize and understand that new playground equipment for our facility was not budgeted in the current capital project, and we feel that this effort cannot wait another few years to be considered for the next capital plan. We would like to work together to form a proposal to make this happen as soon as possible. Right now, our playgrounds are in disrepair and in desperate need of general maintenance, TLC, and updating. We currently do not have an inclusive playground that allows accessibility to all of our handicap and social needs students. Aside from vandalism, there are also multiple sections of the playground that are useless due to being broken and missing parts. Our number one goal is getting a safe, updated playground equipment and to provide an inclusive atmosphere for all of our children. We ask that you partner with us in any way that you can, collaborate with us to provide for our students. We want to ensure that our children have access to safe, accessible, inclusive equipment. This is not only a benefit for the students that are currently enrolled, but also for those enrolling in the coming years. We're looking forward to opening this conversation with you and partnering to make this replacement project a reality. And we want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Carolyn Palladino? Do you have a question mark as to whether or not?
Again, I wasn't planning, I wasn't sure if I was going to speak, but I can't, I can't just sit here. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. But there's a couple of things that I think are really important for everyone to know. One is that this was, could have all been avoided. All we needed was a coach to go to his players and apologize. Then we would have been done. And that is what the girls expected. They expected their coach to come out and say, I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry that I made you feel uncomfortable. I'm sorry for my actions. I'm sorry. So, that happened in the spring. That the girls went to the school to talk about this, that they felt uncomfortable, unsafe. And yet, that's all he had to do was apologize. So, okay, that didn't happen. And so, then the season finishes sadly, but everyone assumed this gentleman, actually, this person, this coach, would not return. So, we thought, okay, this is done with, and the girls' voices will have been heard. But then here we are. The coach has been rehired, and it's sending a message to these girls once again that your words, your, what you've witnessed, what you've experienced, doesn't matter. So, here we are, in this moment, in time, once again, trying to teach our kids to do the right thing. And we're not listening, we couldn't apologize to them, number one. And now, we're, not only did we not apologize, we're throwing it right back in their face by rehiring someone. They're not going to play the sport. They're choosing, they're, girls have come up to me and told me they didn't want to play basketball, and they don't want to play softball. Why? Because this coach, who made them feel uncomfortable, is going to be involved in those programs. What in the world are we doing? We are seriously putting this coach above our girls' lives and their experiences? That's what we're saying. That's what we're doing. Really, that is the message that we're sending. I, I mean, I beg you, I do. I don't know what to say at this point because it does seem too late. And it is, it's like, we, we tried to do the right thing. We thought the school would do the right thing, and then here we are. So, so what you're saying, what everyone is saying, and that's actually why we're here, right? What we're saying, the Board of Ed is saying, and what our school administrators are saying, our superintendent, Corey, this is what you're saying. You're saying that this coach, this coach is more important, and his position is more important than our students. By your lack of action, this is what we're saying. Please, as parents, as people, as humans, for all our students, for our parents, for our teachers. Come on, guys. Let's just talk one another, to one another. This is the situation. Thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for, as you said, thank you for serving as board members. You're right. We don't give you guys enough credit. But this is a moment in time where your word, your action, your service matters. We need you. We need you to represent our kids, our community.
Barb Craig, I live in South Ougio. I've got a couple items left over from last month, as well as some things from, that I wanted to bring up. First of all, we came with another school district team to the Invitational Cross Country Run that was sponsored here about a month ago. I heard more comments from team parents that were participating, what a wonderful job was done, how well the course was set up and maintained. They were just very, very impressed and very pleased, and they were verbalizing that. So I thought that should be passed on, and I hope your student athlete is making a full recovery. That was pretty traumatic for the kids that were there. We were at that, that run as well. That being said, we parked over by the elementary school. I'm shocked, being that we're trying to develop an awareness in kids of fairness and inclusion, to see eight parking spaces set aside for people with energy-efficient vehicles. I'm not sure why that happened. You're smiling, so maybe you've got an answer for me. As I drove through the parking lot, I did not see them anywhere else. It was only at the elementary school.
Yeah, it has to do with the, with the school being built and being brand-new, so it's a, it's a lead-type school, so it's at the highest efficiency rating, but you have to, when you do that, you have to designate some spots, so that was something...
Well, I think we're leading in the wrong direction, if that's the case. I think we need to take a stand on that. The next thing, I'm a swimmer. When the pool, community pool opened, we were assured that there were not going to be restrictions. And I understand there are constraints because of the availability of lifeguards. As I go through the board meeting agenda, we're hiring a whole bunch of kids, or approving a whole bunch of kids, as student tutors. But I'd like to know what is being done. I don't expect you to answer, but follow up for me with the athletic department. What is being done to recruit student lifeguards, or any lifeguards? The pool has a really open schedule at 6 o'clock in the morning. I am not a morning person. I swim usually five to seven days a week, a half a mile to a mile a day, so it's not coming and dip my toes in. This has been going on for quite a while. And when I emailed, is it Kyle? Whoever the director is. Anyway, he did get back to me, and he said, the district does not allow the public in the building during school hours. You used to have a swim, I think it was 11 to 1, in addition to the morning, and then some afternoons. And I do understand about the lifeguards, but take us older folks into consideration that don't do 6 o'clock in the morning swimming. Players, if you could look into that. And then, the other thing, back in January, I brought up an issue about bullying. It's happened again. A friend has been to the hospital multiple times with her kids that have been slammed into lockers, or pushed down, or kicked. One of them ended up not just, okay, let's go in and put a Band-Aid on it, having to have CT scan and other interventional things done because of the bullying issue. This is not your fault. It's not the school's fault. It's our culture right now. We have a bunch of kids who don't have the structure they need, they don't have the loving on that they need. When people are afraid, particularly children, and I speak as an elementary school teacher, from K through 6 Special Ed, and you've probably seen it in your own kids, if you have children. When children are afraid, when they have fear, it comes out in anger. We have a lot of kids that have no way to displace a lot of this anger, and they're taking it out on all their kids. You can't, you don't have eyes in the back of your head, you can't see every move that's made, and of course, they're not bullying in front of people, they're bullying behind the backs. And it's verbal, as well as physical, it's emotional. We have kids that are afraid to come to school. This is not a new problem. I have some who's bullied on the bus two weeks ago. My suggestion is that we find some interested parents, a whole bunch of interested students, because I think that the kids need to take ownership of this. Find a way to come together in a committee or a group, and see what we can come up with to address it. When I was teaching in a neighboring district years ago, we started having vandalism in the bathrooms, we started having a lot of bullying going on, for no particular reason. It was a mixed demographic of the downtown kids, the street kids, and the kids from a more affluent area. And what we did was formed a Right to Respect Committee, with the kids leading it, directing it, and coming up with ideas. Did it stop completely? No. Did it make a difference? It certainly did. I think we owe it to our kids, and we owe it to our teachers, who are dealing with a whole lot of stuff that, and we love you, and I appreciate every one of you, I've been behind your backs, I know what it's like to teach. I know what it's like that a kid was bullied. I've talked to several people in the community. We had some amazing resources. There's an after-school program at one of the churches, we have a Boys and Girls Club, we have Joshua's House. We have resources. We need more volunteers. We need to make these kids feel like they're wanted, needed, like they have a purpose, and like they have value. And I think it's our responsibility as a community, as parents, grandparents, and neighbors, that we get together and do something about this. Because it's going to go on. We're never going to get re-evolved, but I think we need to step up now and take a look at what's happening in our community. This is Ougio. This is not where we are. Culture has changed, and it's a shift over the last couple years. But I think we can make a difference for a lot of these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Joshua? I'm sorry, I can't read in the last minute, I have a bit of a spark. There's a question mark, I don't know. All right. Thanks, everybody. I don't know what's... Mr. Civic?
I, can I speak?
Technically, you didn't sign in, but sure, I may go in.
I couldn't, you know what? There were people standing in line while...
Hey, you must go, hey, you're very welcome.
I mean, I can't, I just can't avoid this opportunity, Kyle. First, I want to compliment...
You gotta change my mind, man.
Want to compliment the district, which you did with the teacher's contract. You changed, you, you've done something, taken a risk with the idea of saving the school district from unbounded financial liability and health care. Can carry on my compliments, and I hope that every year, during budget time, we'll see how much this has saved us or cost us more, and use that as we go forward. I'm glad to see that you finally dumped that law firm that's been giving you such professional service for the past few decades. Congratulations on that. Speaking about law, I'll just say, litigation in this domain is nothing but a pilot war and victory for the winner, that just cost the taxpayer. And it costs, this, if there's litigation, it's going to cost the school district time and resources, money. So I hope that can be handled without such a forum. I gave Mr. Corey and Mr. Civic a note, and I laid out what I perceive as a retreat from transparency, accountability, and responsibility on the part of the board. I can't, I would take way over my time if I went into length about this, but I'll just say, in 2015, Mr. Crosby, with one word in 118-page agenda, deleted, eliminated the board's, substantial part of the board's obligations. And then, on May 9th, this is the, this year, at that board meeting, resolutions were passed to amend or approve or accept Sections 1000, 2000, 3000 of the policy manual. This was not an update, it was a replacement of, in effect, it was a replacement of the previously existing policy manual, which, I wonder when it ever existed, and I won't go into the length on that one. But I didn't see any discussion, any board member saying, here's what we had, here's what we're changing it to, and what is the effect of this? If you guys aren't looking at the, if you guys aren't going down into the details on that one, and at least having some discussion in public, I think you should get off the board. Thank you.
Okay. That's that. I need a motion. Well, I want to say what? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I want to just, quick, the Winter Circle students are here with the car out back, so when we finish, they would love to show you the car that they built.
That's great. They can drive it in here.
Yeah. I also, too, I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but Tony Taranto, I want to thank him. He invited Heath and I up to Transportation Center to have breakfast with, with the team up there, and it was just, it was great. We really enjoyed it. Tony does a great job, you know, obviously making sure that my kids get to and from school safe, so I'm really appreciative of everything that the bus drivers and the transportation department do.
Ken? Over in the corner, sorry.
Civic, how are you? A couple things going on this week. We have picture retakes on Wednesday at Middle School. We also have our first school dance in three years, Whole School Dance, this Thursday from 6 to 8. Kids are really excited about it. Couple concerts coming up, November 21st, the high school, middle school band concert. And then, on December 7th, we will be having our O M S chorus concert also.
Thanks, Ben. Joe?
Shoot, I'd just like to give a shout-out to the Appalachian Fire Department for helping us with our trunk of treats. And that was the first time we've been able to assemble that many people all at once. We had over 300 some families participate, and it was a well-attended event, and really want to thank them. I'd also like to publicly thank my secretary, Tammy Oriselle, because there was a lot of work that went into it. So I want to thank her. Thank you.
Go.
First, our O F A interact club is collecting gently used winter coats for students' families. That's going to be in our Welcome Center. So if we have families that wanted to donate coats, that would be great for our interact club. We've got up and running now, partnered with a company called Paper. It's 24/7 access for tutoring services for our students. It's done virtually, but it's a great way for students to get assistance after hours, whether it's homework assignments, writing activities. It's a great way for students to get connected and make sure they stay on top of their work, and it's all done through their iPad, so we're excited to get that started. We've had some teachers working on it already, so it's done a great start so far.
All right.
Real quick, to go along with what Tom said, we really have a very good fire department in our whole district. And one of the things that our community does, that I really appreciate, is every time one of our athletic teams win a sectional meet, they meet them down at the Treadway parking lot, and they give that bus a parade home to the high school. It is really exciting for the kids to be able to wave out the window to the people along the streets while all our fire trucks are blowing their whistles. It's really a cool thing. We do have very good fire departments that are involved with the community, and they should be connected.
Okay. So with that, any motion to adjourn? Linda? You guys ready? All clear? Dave adjourned. Thanks, folks.